I'm sorry to break up the fun, but we have to get to work. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here. The Dent County Commissioners Court is now called to order. We do have a quorum. The first item on the agenda is the invocation given by Dr. Matt Richardson, our Public Health Director, followed by pledges Brad Sebastian, our Fire Marshal. Please stand.
Good morning, Commissioners. As our prayer this morning, our invocation, I'm going to read Philippians, Chapter four. So if you'll bow with me. Our Father, we hear these words this morning and we take them to heart from your servant, Paul. "Rejoice in the Lord always." I say it again, rejoice. "Let your gentleness be evident to all. The Lord is near." "Do not be anxious about anything, but in every situation, in prayer and petition, with thanksgiving, present your requests to God. And the peace of God, which transcends all understanding, will guard your hearts and your minds in Christ Jesus." Finally, brothers and sisters, whatever is true, whatever is noble, whatever is right, whatever is pure, whatever is lovely, whatever is admirable, if anything is excellent or praiseworthy, think about these things. Whatever you have learned, or received, or heard from me, or seen in me, put into practice. And the God of peace be with you. Amen. Do you want me to pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And to our Texas. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Dr. Richardson, that was an excellent reading of the scripture this morning, especially through all the things that were going on in Dent County. I want to take a moment to acknowledge and offer our condolences and our prayers to the ones that are going through with this weather that we've had, because it's been tough, but the Lord is still asking us not to be anxious, because he's still in control. And so this morning, I just want to thank you for bringing that forward. And at this time, I would have a public comment form. Mr. Willie Huspit is here.
Commissioner Mitchell and other members of the commission. My name's Willie Huspit. I live at 623 Newton. I was waiting for you all to come. I was, uh... Talked to Teresa and found out a little bit more about her. She's a employee stiller. She stole one of these gentlemen's over here, best employee, and she had no remorse for it at all. She thought it was a good thing to do. That's Teresa we, I thought I knew. But anyway, I'm just kidding. Trying to put a smile on her face today. I, uh... I, I'm just really taken aback and I'm saddened about what the state of, some of the things that's going on in our country. And I'm trying to find something. One of the gentlemen I walked up with said that he was just glad to be alive. And I thought, you know, I should adopt that, but I haven't yet. But just the kids who are being killed in these wars and the, uh... The state, the, the state of our, uh, political area, things that's going on. People are saying really mean things to each other, and I'm just sad. Fought in Vietnam, didn't actually go fight on the ground. I, I was in a department where I, we just took the people in that was hurt. And, uh, but it was just sad. And then, but I liked the, the fact that I was in the military. It taught me what honor was really like, to be honorable. And I noticed that the sheriffs, the personnel, they, they looked to be honorable men. And because they looked the part, then I feel safe in this chamber. I think that they would, 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 uh, take care of any problems that we have here. They would, they certainly wouldn't look at, look around to see who was African-American, and they would just protect them, or wouldn't take, protect, they don't. That's not what the oath said they would do. They are going to protect and serve, period. And I remember when I wore my uniform, I felt the same way. So I thought, I'm gonna, I like this song that, when, when Whitney Houston sang it, and it gives me hope. So I wanted to do it again today, but I found out that Sony, who is a greedy little American company, like most of them are, said that I couldn't do it. And I want to, someone to explain that, but I've taken up all my time. What they said. And Dawn, would you do that for me? Could you come up and explain to the people what Sony said about me playing that song?
Sony Entertainment notified us on May 21st that we did not have the rights to the Whitney Houston's version of the National Anthem. And therefore, in order for us to have it as part of a public proceeding, we would have to buy the rights to the song or cease playing it and allowing anyone to play it during a public session. So.
Thank you, Dawn. And Mr. Huspit, you know, we enjoyed the song. I could sing it for you if you really wanted to hear it.
What'd you say?
I can sing the song if you really want to hear it.
I was thinking about singing it, but my wife, she wasn't very kind. She said, "Don't do that. Don't put them through that."
My husband would say the same thing to me. But thank you.
But anyway, so I was, and then, so that made me sad all over again. What in the world could be wrong with singing that song? I, it encourages me. So I thought Dawn, not Dawn, but Teresa had just did that on her own and made that story up, but I found out it wasn't, it was the truth. So, ah, I liked the song. When, uh, I was coming up here years ago and former Commissioner, um, Marchant noticed that I didn't stand up during the pledge. And, but he was kind. He didn't talk to me from that position. He came up afterwards, when we were in break, and he asked me, "Why didn't I?" And I told him, "It was my way of protesting." Well, the, the country didn't do anything to me. It was the Commissioners at that time making these rules. So why was I standing, sitting down in that situation? Well, then I went to City Council and I started fussing at my son, who's the mayor, about something he did. He told me I was out of order. What kind of son is that? How, how can you have a son to tell you, "You're out of order"? Well, he did, anyway. So, but then I noticed one of the council members doesn't stand during the pledge. And I'm thinking, how can you be in this public office in this country and not stand up? You know, when you listen to the words of the pledge, I would think you would have to do it. But I guess he has his freedoms too. But, so now I'm sad. I can't hear my song. I, uh, I sure can't sing it. That would make everybody sad. And so I'm just... Let me just say this. I was in the military and I got an honorable discharge. Now, in order to get an honorable discharge, you have to do what you're told, or you won't get an honorable discharge. So as I was saying, the, the sheriff's deputies are here and they just look honorable. And it causes me to be safe, feeling safe and secure. So I appreciate that. So that's what I want to say about that, uh, the, the song. I might try to sing it. Not now. I gotta work on it. But, so I wanna, I wanted to say that. It's got me off my game because I was told I can't play the song. But that's, those are the rules. So I wanna, uh, talk about the fact that I want the people at the cemetery to be honored too. I think they should be honored in the way, in the way I think they should be honored. That, that doesn't mean that it should happen. It's just the way I think they should be honored. The places, their final resting place should not be like it is now. And I'm trying to do whatever I can do within the rules to get it cleaned up. And so, uh, in, in that end, I hope that you will, uh... Continue to do what you can do, uh, to make that happen.
Thank you, Mr. Huspit.
All right. That's all I want to say about that. Thank you.
We appreciate you. Thank you.
At this time, I'm going to move up 13A. Discussion and possible action related to the disaster declaration and executive order, E-024-05-2A for severe weather and any appropriate action. At this time, I'm gonna ask Samantha Taylor to come up and give us an update on everything.
All right, Commissioners. Thank you for having me today. First, I just want to thank you all for your support during the severe weather events, during the tornado and then our other rounds of severe weather that impacted North Texas, causing quite a bit of damage. But just to recap a little bit, on Saturday night into early Sunday morning, Sanger, Texas, and then the Ray Roberts Marina was hit with a brief EF1 tornado. We did have some damages in Pilot Point, causing inflow to the Valley View tornado that was ranked an EF3, in most cases, and an EF2. So we've had quite a bit of response, and it's a holistic effort. And I want to extend my gratitude for the Sheriff's Office Dispatch for taking the calls, the Fire Marshals going out on scene, kind of being our eyes out on the field while we're standing up the EOC. And Transportation and Engineering coming out and helping out. And I know Eric Gildersleeve helped drove Goliath to help immediately in Valley View while we're trying to figure out what's happening here in Denton County. And then the support from our other departments with purchasing and, you know, IT and everyone else. It's been a big effort, so I just want to start off with a big thank you on top of that. So with the tornadoes, we, aftermath, we had handled consequence management. So we set up a water distribution site at Ray Roberts Marina. We did damage assessments along the damaged areas for Ray Roberts and Pilot Point. And then we also coordinated with our volunteer agencies, you know, bringing that whole community support. We stood up a long-term recovery committee, which is comprised of our nonprofits. And United Way of Denton County set up a fund for people to donate, to help those in need. And this long-term recovery committee is working with case management, doing that follow-up work to make sure we're meeting individual needs and family needs other than a blanket of, "Here's some money", but really identify truly what we need to help support the community. I do have FEMA here today and TINM to brief up on their, on their portions. But from the tornado on the 27th, we were, um, looped in with Governor Abbott's disaster declaration, along with three other counties, for the, um, April, April series of events. So we were eligible for individual assistance to our community partners. And so with that, they can seek federal aid on top of what we are doing here for Denton County. TINM is here today to talk about the amount of damages, the people who are self-reporting, so I won't get too much into that. But just further into what we're trying to do is extend our disaster declaration. Here tomorrow, we will be setting up a, um, a multi-agency resource center, which at the Sanger ISD Butterfield Elementary School and their gymnasium. We'll have our volunteer agencies in the gym, and residents who were impacted can come to this area for a one-stop shop for aid. If they have questions, like for legal paperwork, they can meet with legal aid there. If they want chaplain services, we can pull them aside in a room. We can meet with Red Cross for any case management or Salvation Army to get them fed and, and so on. So those are just a few of the nonprofits that will be there.
Okay.
But I do have FEMA here, if you want to, um, come on up. So they can kind of talk a little bit more about the individual assistance. So all of Denton County residents who were impacted from the recent storms are eligible for this. So we'll go ahead and have them brief out real quick.
Thank you. Hello, how are you?
Welcome.
Um, it's an honor to be here for you and representing FEMA to assist the, the people of Texas and Denton County in their recovery efforts after these storms. We currently, as she mentioned, the multi-agency recovery is going to be at the Butterfield Elementary School. And we've also are going to have what we call a disaster recovery center there as well, that'll be there for indefinite time, as long as there is a need, that they'll be there to assist residents coming in. And it just had their inspection. And we do have a soft opening plan for 1:00 PM on Wednesday as well. So we're looking forward to opening that up and, you know, be co-located with the, with the mark that they, they are planning. For the state of Texas, right now, we have valid registrations for the state of 124,711. And that represents a total for 22 counties at this time, with more add-on counties anticipated as well. For Denton County alone, there are 887 valid registrations and a total amount dispersed in the county of $197,852. And that's going up, you know, every day. I, I daily give a report to Samantha. I gave her one yet, starting yesterday, and I'll be daily giving her a report update on those type of figures for the county. The state has also activated its D-Snap, which is Disaster Supplemental Nutritional Assistance Program, which will be, um, operating in the declared county. which will be operating in the declared counties as well. And we also have disaster unemployment as a program that, that has been activated. So, anyone who has lost their employment, and it's, it's easier to qualify for that because it's not necessarily, you can be self-employed or just lost your job for, you know, a few weeks. You don't have to have such as the waiting week and that type of thing. So, disaster unemployment has a little bit lower threshold for, for getting the unemployment assistance. We currently have DSA, Disaster Survivor Assistance Crews, who are working out in the field. And they are working in the areas of Pilot Point and Ray Roberts Lake areas, where the, where the significant damage was from the tornadoes. They go door-to-door speaking to people. They have tablets with them. And so, they are able to register people on the spot if they would like to. They can just sit down right there with them and help them do their registration if they don't know. Also, if there are any people who have any additional needs that maybe can't get out of the house, or, you know, need some extra assistance to get registered, if they notify the emergency manager, they will go directly to their home and visit with them and give them any assistance that they need if they can't get out. We have a couple of ways to register with, with FEMA. We have disasterassistance.gov. They can also download the FEMA app and can apply for assistance in, in that manner. And we have a 1-800-621-3362 number that is available between the hours of 6:00 AM and 10:00 PM that people can register for assistance with that as well. Okay? My, my position here with FEMA is I'm in operations and I'm a division supervisor. So, I, I am assigned the four counties right now of Cook, Collin, Denton, and Monte Counties. And we're looking to get Dallas County added as well as one of our add-on counties. So, what I do is I act sort of as the liaison between FEMA and the county. And if there are any questions or if any requests, I can, if I don't know the answer immediately, I will find the answer and get back to you as soon as possible. We will also have some intergovernmental affairs officers that will come in and speak to any of the elected officials. I understand they just got in yesterday, so they're, they will be reaching out and making contact with you all as well. And that's about all I have, if you have any questions.
Wonderful. We really appreciate it.
I, I just want, I, more of a confirmation. So, anyone in Denton County that's experienced a loss as a result of, it doesn't have to be the tornado, right?
If they have losses from any of the storms that happened.
Because we've had multiple storms.
Yes. From, from, I believe the date is April 27th. And moving forward, the incident period at this time is still open, although it may be closed either.
Right.
They're looking at closing the, the incident period. If the storms happened within the incident period, then they would be able to get assistance for them.
May 27th?
No, no, no. Actually, it was declared.
April, okay.
April 27th.
Okay.
That's good.
Yeah. So, it does go back to that incident period. It, it's not necessarily for this county. It's for the whole state. And that's when the declaration happened.
Thank you.
Yeah. Because, because I, I, there's just lots of people I know. We, we had the, essentially had the equivalent of a hurricane blow through, right? So.
Right. With the straight-line winds.
Yeah. And lots of damage from that and flooding. And I've already, Samantha's already helped with, with some of those things, but we appreciate all that. But I just want to make sure that people realize that if you weren't like right where the tornado hit, that, that it's, it's basically, if you were one of these storms, which we had a bunch.
For the entire county.
Yep. Very good.
And the counties that are declared. And, you know, we encourage everyone to register. That's, that's our biggest thing, is please register because you don't know, perhaps down the road, you may find out that you had damages for something that you didn't know.
Right.
Underinsured, uninsured, even if you are insured. We still encourage you, if you had damages, to register.
Oh, that's good to know.
Because there may be programs that FEMA may have that you may not know about and that your insurance may not cover. So, we encourage you to register. We also work in conjunction with the Small Business Administration, and they are the lending arm of FEMA during times of disaster. They offer very low-interest loans to renters and homeowners.
Very good. Well, thank you. Thank you so much.
I really appreciate it.
Yes, I had one observation as well. I believe that the flash flood warning has now been extended through Friday of this week. So, there still could be damages happening from rising water, or however you wanna put it. And I know from past experience with the road crews, that anytime there's a rain event, there's certain roads in Denton County that you can't go on through. And so, our crews get out and put up barricades, et cetera. And I'm sure that happened again this time, probably more so. And I'd like to thank them for, for doing that because most of us are sitting at home saying, "Oh, my gosh, look at it rain." And we've got people who literally go out in that and keep those of us who are out driving around from going into something that could be dangerous. So, we gotta watch out for the flooding area as well.
Right. And also, the county is applying for public assistance. And that is going through. Right now, they are doing preliminary damage assessments, PDAs, so, to, to get that done. It has not been declared for this county yet, but they are, are working on submitting all the information for it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate all you guys are doing.
Thank you. Samantha?
Thank you. And just to recap, they'll be at the Butterfield Elementary to help answer any questions too. So, if they have questions with the application, FEMA will be there, and then we'll have Small Business Loan Administration as well. But I do have TDM real quick to report on the amount of damages that we have received so far for the county as a whole. And this is Lexi, our new CLO.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Lexi Trinoskis. I'm the CLO for Denton County. So, just a bit of that ISTAT data, which ISTAT helps to get a better understanding of areas affected and the recovery needs for those individuals. So, so far, as of this morning, we have 282 total submissions, 30 homes destroyed, 37 major, 69 minor, and 135 affected. 239 of these were single-family homes, and 27 of them were manufactured. An ISTAT submission can be filled out in English and Spanish on damage.tdem.texas.gov. Okay. Thank you. Any question?
I want to thank all of you all, Samantha and everybody.
Thank you.
That participated, Eric, Jody, everybody, the whole Denton County team, all of our volunteers, TDM, everyone that has got out and helped with this. I appreciate all that y'all have done. It was, it was a disaster. And you all have stepped up and have worked nonstop, whole Denton County and all the other counties. So, I appreciate all that you're doing, and thank you so much for taking care of us when we don't know what to do.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for having me.
Could I ask one quick question?
Yes, ma'am.
You mentioned mobile homes and single-family. What about all those boats that were damaged and destroyed out at the lake, Ray Roberts Marina? Is that included in there somehow?
So, boats, as of right now, I do not know of any boats that are added. But property owners, since it is private property, they are able to go and fill out a damage ISTAT through that, that website.
Thank you. I understand that there were just dozens of those that were destroyed. So, thank you. I appreciate all that information. Thank you. Thank you, Sam.
Commissioner, I, I, I know this seems obvious, but I think it's good to point out that these storms don't seem to happen from 8:00 to 5:00 Monday through Friday.
Right.
And so, a lot of these folks, obviously, are emergency management. But like Eric driving, I, I don't think that was between 8:00 to 5:00 in the morning.
No.
Yeah. No, that was not getting sleep for a couple of days. And so, we appreciate this.
Ron, you hit something.
Yeah, I do. I was gonna wait for our community updates, but this is a perfect time. I just want to thank emergency services, the fire marshals, the sheriff's department, all the volunteers, road and bridge, for doing such a wonderful job. You know, you don't, you, you don't plan, you plan for these. You don't know when it's gonna happen. And you try to exercise the best ability to, to be able to respond properly. But until it happens, you don't know how you're gonna act. And fortunately or unfortunately, I was out of town when this all occurred. And Jody calls me, which thank you very much for keeping me up to date. And bless you. And so, it, it's a, a little helpless when you're in somewhere so far away and you can't help your own community. But it's also very relaxing to know that you have such a wonderful crew that's gonna take care of it, whether you're here or not.
Yes.
So, it's really imperative that you guys understand how much I appreciate, how, how great of a job you did. And our citizens know that, that you, we have wonderful people at Denton County to make sure that in a disaster situation, that we're there to help them out. And it is, that's exactly what, I mean, it's horrible. I literally have missed my place by maybe half a mile if that. So, I mean, yeah. Fortunately, I wasn't there, but I didn't, I mean, I'm very fortunate, no loss of animals, buildings, anything. So, but even my boat didn't get destroyed. Everybody else's did. I don't know why. I should've stayed in Vegas a little longer, but I was pretty lucky that, that weekend. But nevertheless, thank you all for doing such a wonderful job.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioners, I need approval for extending the disaster.
Move to approve.
Second.
Until it's rescinded by the judge. The judge can declare it for seven days, and then after those seven days, we have to approve it. So, we got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Awesome. Thank you. I would just like to make note, if any citizens do have any questions regarding any of the services provided, they can call our office or email us at 940-349-4285, or email emergencymanagement@dentoncounty.gov. We have other resources. They can call 211.
The Butterfield, when's that start?
That's starting tomorrow at 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Thank you.
And one last shout-out. I do want to mention, I forgot to mention before, so, but Dawn Cobb and her team have been phenomenal in helping. That's my favorite night owl. She helped me throughout the night with the media inquiries. And if I didn't have her, we would be still answering media inquiries to this day.
Yes.
Samantha, you know, we've all heard about a baptism by fire. You got a baptism by wind and rain.
Yeah.
And you have just done great. We're so proud of you and the entire department and everyone who helped. It's horrible what we've been through, but I think as a county, we have responded to it as well as, as anybody could.
Awesome. I appreciate y'all's support.
Thank you.
And you know, it takes all of us.
It does, yeah.
It doesn't matter who you are, what position you have. It takes all of us when we have a disaster to pitch in. You never know what you can do until something happens, and we include everyone. You know, somebody's got to talk to the media. Somebody's got to do the work. Somebody's got to take the calls. And, and somebody has to make the decision to spend the money. So, we appreciate everything that you all have done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, I'm gonna go on with the agenda. Now, we could go home, guys. My next item is the consent agenda. Any court member can remove an item from this agenda to be considered separately. Approval of automaking appointments and any appropriate action. Interviews were conducted and set forth in a Denton County policy adopted by the Commissioners' Court. So, I need a move, a motion to approve this consent agenda.
To move.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. On the consent agenda, we have automaking appointments. We have a new hire in the Department of Transportation and Engineering. We have a new hire in public health, a promotion in public health, a promotion in purchasing, a new hi, hire in records management, and a promotion in technology, technology services. Next item on the agenda is the approval of bill report payments from CSCD, Community Correction, TAIP, Sheriff Training, Sheriff Forfeiture, VIT Interest, and DA Forfeiture. I need a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is 6A, approval of the report on proceeds from the online surplus auction, number 24-2810, held in April and May 2024, and any appropriate action.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Edmondson and second by Commissioner Falcone. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is 6B, approval to declare miscellaneous office furniture equipment and appliances as surplus. Advertise and place in online auction, number 242819, to be held in June 24, and any appropriate action. I have a motion by, Commissioner. She's Commissioner Edmondson. And second by Commissioner Falcone. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Commissioner, Commissioner, I apologize. On 5A, the auditor didn't give us his two cents on that, I don't believe.
Yeah, I had no changes today. That's okay.
Jeff, I'm sorry.
Oh, not a problem. I didn't have any changes today anyway, so.
She knew. She knew.
I knew he didn't have any changes.
I should just be quiet over here.
Oh, you should.
All right. Sorry, Commissioner.
That's okay. Next item is 6C, approval of specifications and authority to advertise RFP number 242814, independent auditors and appointment of evaluation committee to include Jeff May, County Auditor, Cindy Brown, County Treasurer, and Stacy Dovercheck, Chief Deputy Tax Assessor Collector, and any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Williams and second by Commissioner Falcone. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is 6D, approval of award of ITB number 24-2805, exterior lighting maintenance, to C and G Electric, Inc., and any appropriate action. I'll move approval. I have a motion by myself and a second by Commissioner Edmondson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 6E is approval of evaluation committee's recommendation to rank BGE, Inc. as the most qualified engineering firm for Strata Road Project under RFPQ, number 23-2767, Trip 22, Own System Projects, and any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Falcone and second by Commissioner Williams. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 6F is approval of change order for the Hulcher Data Cabling Installation, purchased, purchased on February 14, 2024, from Graybar Electric Company through the Almina Partners Cooperative Contract, number EV2370, and any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Edmondson and second by Commissioner Falcone. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is 7A, approval of budget amendment request, number 101470, for the County Treasurer to transfer $11,986 from Technology Capital to Technology Equipment. Funding is being reallocated to a non-capital line item to purchase multiple printers with pricing estimates below the capital item threshold, and any appropriate action. I have a motion by Commissioner Edmondson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Falcone. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We like that those numbers come down in price. That's a good change.
Yes. Next item is 7B, approval of budget amendment request, number 101480, for public health, Diabetes Case Management, Management Program, DSRIP, to transfer $38,800 from medical supplies to vehicles, capital to purchase a medium SUV to replace an unrepairable vehicle as recommended by the Vehicle Assessment Committee, and any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Williams and second by Commissioner Falcone. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I ha, I have pulled 7C. I think I sent you all an email.
Yes, ma'am.
And the judge wants to also pull 7D for further discussion. Excuse me. 7E is approval of budget, excuse me, budget amendment request, number 101510, to reallocate funding in the slot for the approved forensic death investigator position. Sorry. For Public Health Department from, from Public Health Clinical Salary and benefit line items for a total transfer amount of $31,546 to accurately track expenses and any appropriate action.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion from Kevin, Commissioner Falcone.
Kevin's fine.
And second from Commissioner Williams. I'm sorry, guys.
It's okay. It's always when you gotta talk that you have.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is a report from Human Resources regarding hiring actions of elected officials presented for recording purposes only.
Commissioners, good morning. We have two promotions in Council President Six. One new hire in County Clerk's Office, two rehires in the County Clerk's Office, one new hire in adult probation, six new hires in the District Clerk, one new hire in juvenile probation, two rehires in juvenile probation, six new hires in the Sheriff's Office, five of them are detention officers, one, one new hire in the Tax Office, one promotion in the Tax Office, and one rehire in. in the Ag Extension Office. That's it for this week.
Thank you. Next item is item number 10A, approval of the Steeplechase Acres Found Plat Lot 1, Block A, -368 acres located in Commissioner Precinct 4, and any appropriate action. And I'll second. I have a motion by Commissioner Edmondson, and second by Commissioner Williams. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is 10B, approval of the Tac Acres Found Plat Lot 1, Block A, -2021 acres located in Commissioner Precinct 4, and any appropriate action. And I'll second. We have a motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by myself. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is 10C, approval of the Howard Acres Found Plat Lots 1 and 2, Block A, -8167 acres located in Commissioner Precinct 1, and any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Williams, and second by Commissioner Falconer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 10D, approval of the request to hold a public hearing on July 9, 2024, at 9:00 a.m. for the replat of Ridgecrest North Phase 3, Lots 14R1 through 14R5, Block A, 22.15, located in Commissioner Precinct 1, and any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Williams, and second by Commissioner Falconer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 12A is approval of the modification to contract number W9126G23P0027 between the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and Denton County regarding the de-obligation of remaining funds for the 2023 Summer Patrol Services at Lake Lewisville, and any appropriate action. I have a motion, we have a motion by Commissioner Edmondson, and second by Commissioner Falconer. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is 14A, approval of contract for engineering service supplemental agreement number three between Denton County, Texas, and Half Associates, Inc., to provide right-of-way acquisition services for the Shady Shores Road project from Silk Tree Court to Parkside Court, and from north of Dobbs Road to south of West Shady Shores Road, in the amount of $138,400 for a total revised contract amount of $4,318,279, with funding to come from Shady Shores Road, Precinct 2, Trip 22, order of the line item number 89-7444-90-20, and any appropriate action, Commissioner Precinct 2 and Commissioner Precinct 3.
Move approval.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second from Commissioner Falconer, and second for myself. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 14B is approval of the mutual aid agreement between Sanger Independent School District and Denton County, Texas, and the county requests use and operation of the Butterfield Elementary Gymnasium owned by Sanger Independent School District for use and recovery efforts associated with the EF1 Sanger and Pilot Point tornadoes, and any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Second.
Everybody's seconded. We have a motion by Commissioner Williams, and second by Commissioner Falconer. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, oh.
Yep.
Let's go to our community updates before we go to executive session. Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, I've got one thing here. Baseball and softball seasons have ended for our local teams, and, but there's quite a few players that have been recognized. I just want to recognize, this is only going to be the softball because a lot of the baseball hasn't been totally completed with recognitions yet. But congratulations to the Sanger softball team and the coaching staff. The coaching staff was awarded Coaching Staff of the Year for District 748. And then we have eight baseball players, or softball players, with Texas Girls Coaches Association with all-state teams, three from Sanger, two from Guyer, two from Aubrey, and one from Crum. Sanger was McKenna Meeks, Leah Colower, and Kylie Cochran. Guyer had Erin Peterson and Finley Montgomery. Aubrey had Braylee Duncan and Tammy Cherry. And then Crum had Addison Martin Dell. And so congratulations to those ladies, and hopefully next week I'll have the baseball. That's all I've got.
Commissioner Falconer?
Thank you, Commissioner. So first and foremost, a little shout-out, happy birthday to Isabel Hernandez, my chief administrator. She actually is taking the day off, but she's celebrating her birthday today. So we do have a few events in Precinct 2, the Crossroads Summer Market, June 8, from 8:00 to 11:00 at Crossroads Park, and in Corinth, the Third Annual Discover Lake Cities. That's June 11, from 5:00 to 8:30. And that's beginning at Thousand Hills Church. And then in Carrollton, Paws on the Square, it's always fun, and that's June 8, from 9:00 to noon in downtown Carrollton. Be sure and take your dog down to the square, and there's all kinds of fun, and vaccinations and all that kind of stuff. The vaccinations are generally for the dogs.
Some people.
That's all you have.
That's it.
Commissioner Edmondson?
So you're going to do Flower Mound in a minute, right? Let me do the other than Flower Mound then. In Haslett, they're having something that sounds really fun. It's a kids' fire camp, and it's on June 8, from 8:00 to 5:00. It costs $50 per child, and you work with the Haslett Fire Department to learn CPR, basic first aid, fire behavior, and then a tour of their city on the fire truck. And that's something that I think a lot of kids will enjoy, maybe be encouraged to go into that as a profession. In Roanoke, the evenings on Oak Street Concert Series continues, June 6, 6:30 to 8:00 on Oak Street. In Trophy Club, they're going to have movie night, and they're going to show The Goonies. That'll be on the 7, 8:45 to 10:30 at Harmony Park. Bring your own long chairs and blankets and enjoy the movie with friends. And then I'd like to mention that on every Friday morning, there is a farmer's market out at Robeson Ranch that is open to the public. Come see all kinds of homegrown and homemade goodies.
Thank you, Commissioners. For Flower Mound, the Community Activity Center, is there a 16th Birthday Bash, June 8, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.? We're going to celebrate Holland Village on June 8, 5:30 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. at Copper's Branch Park. In Lake Dallas, we have Trade Days and Farmer's Market, June 8, 8:00 a.m. to noon. And in Lewisville, we're going to have Sound of Lewisville, June 11, to 7:00 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. at Wayne Ferguson Plaza.